We're called a meeting to order at 4:31. Can we please stand for the pledge? Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic, the Constitution stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of gravity.
Okay, so I know we have public comment at the beginning. We're just gonna go ahead and start with the CBE reporting, and then we'll do the school reopening plan, and then we'll do public comment after that, because I'm assuming that's what most people are probably here for. So David, if you want to go ahead.
Presentations in your board packets. I hope that's not a test. I'm sure everybody's here for the CBE recording. All right, thank you. What a crowd. Thank you all for your interest in CBE. My name is David Hobbins. I'm the Assistant Superintendent at SAU 21. I wanted to kind of frame this presentation. It was actually scheduled, as you can see, for June. We had to push it back. I wanted to frame this presentation as a celebration, really, of the work of the teachers, curriculum coordinators, the administrators, and the kids have done in Seabrook. Great K through eight, really. Tonight's focus, though, is going to be on competency-based education and the middle school model where we are. So over the last three years, we've been giving regular school board presentations. We've had teachers come in. We've had students actually share their work around competency-based. And in a nutshell, what we're talking about when we're talking about competency-based, these are the seven design principles. I'm not going to read them aloud to you. But we're talking about the transition into authentic tasks in the classroom, right? Solving real problems, making connections in between subject areas. You know, connecting math and science, for example, or social studies and English. Really looking at some cross-content and looking at ways in which we can help kids learn how to think and help kids learn how to solve problems rather than just regurgitating an answer. And that's the essence. That's the heart of competency-based, and that's kind of where we've been trying to go for the last three years here at Seabrook. So you're gonna see a lot of words up there on the principal, on the design principles, but the idea is having some student ownership of the problems they're solving, understanding that in a given competency or a given goal, there are a lot of different ways to solve a problem, and we want to allow kids the ability to do that. You know, it's like climbing a mountain, right? There's no one way to climb a mountain. You can climb a mountain in several different ways. And the other thing that competency-based really focuses on is meeting students where they're at. And I think that's just become really prevalent and really important in the context of COVID, as we have students coming back from remote learning, et cetera. So I'll move along. Where we are with students. So over the last three years, we've made a transition into meaningful learning. As seen in CBE board presentations, student work is providing evidence of higher-order thought. Students are starting to transfer skills and content knowledge across contexts. And we're seeing that happen in classes and hopefully we're seeing that in our presentations. And students are having a voice and choice in the product, process, and product. Meaningful assessment. So we've done a lot of work on rubrics, particularly around the QPA work. I know the board is familiar with that. But for the audience, QPA is Quality Performance Assessments. For our students, that means actually having an assessment that's not just a written test. It means solving a problem, doing a task, creating a model, kind of thinking outside the box in terms of our assessments. So that's where we're talking, that's what we're talking about when we're talking about meaningful assessment. The other thing we're doing is removing, it's that third bullet there, removing habits of learning from academic learning. So for example, the fact that you can communicate well and you can be a creative thinker, those are great qualities and they're measurable, but they're not exactly related to the task at hand. So we've learned how to separate kind of qualities that we want to inculcate in our students, but also academic qualities that we want to measure in terms of academic success. So we pulled those apart. And lastly, accurate measurement. All middle schools are creating 1 through 4 competency-based rubrics for summative assessments. We've seen a load of those come through at board meetings, and we've seen lots of them through our work with our teachers. Here's the problem. Say you're assessing a given competency in class, right? Competency 1 is assessed three or four times, and a kid maybe doesn't do so well on that. Competency 2 is assessed one time, okay? The kid does really well. So what the problem that we're seeing is the competencies are being rolled into a traditional grade. So all those are kind of piled together, and the student gets maybe an 86 or, you know, 65 or whatever the number is. But that 65 or 86 doesn't accurately reflect what the student can do, okay? Maybe he did really, he or she did really well on one competency, didn't do so well on another competency. So that's the problem that we're seeing with our reporting right now. And that's the problem we're trying to solve. So flip the coin over to the teacher lens. This is where we are with respect to teachers. We have a set of expectations for teachers that fosters differentiation in the classroom, okay? We've got consistent measurement tools across the SAU and a shared understanding of reporting tools. This is a big one. So for the parents out there, it's important to understand that for the last few years, what we've done is worked with teachers and worked in our professional development time to actually create a codified body of standards and competencies across the SAU. In other words, we have one curriculum across the SAU that we can measure and we can hold students accountable to. And that's a big transition to where we were. This isn't just, you know, Mrs. Jones loves to study dinosaurs, so we're gonna do dinosaurs. This is having something that's common across the SAU. And additionally, it's lined up with Common Core State Standards or Next Gen, which are the science standards nationally, okay? We also have developed first purposeful PD within and across departments, and a means to develop more robust Tier 2 supports and diagnostics. I'll just give you a quick example of this, because I know I'm short on time. We can take a given standard across the entire 4th grade at SAU 21, right? Maybe it's something to do with math, you know? Maybe it's simple multiplication, right? And we can run how students are doing across the entire SAU on multiplication on this given standard, right? And we can see where kids are doing well and where kids maybe aren't doing so well across the entire SAU. So we, as administrators, can start doing professional development to help teachers share ideas, do better assessments, and get kids performing better on that given standard. So that's what I'm talking about when I'm talking about Tier 2 and supports and diagnostics. So what else has CBE done for us? It allows teachers to see how many students are at or approaching a given benchmark. I'll show that in a second. How many times each standard and/or competency has been assessed. How a given competency is tracking across groups or classes, and how an individual student is performing, okay? And this bottom kind of area, hybrid system, that's the problem with the hybrid system that we have right now, is the numerical grade, what it's doing is it's clumping all these different standards into one kind of numerical thing, which really doesn't reflect exactly how students are performing. So that's, again, what we're trying to solve. So let me give you a quick view of what teachers can see in Power School now that we've set it up. As I said, we've built one curriculum, K through 12, at SAU 21, and it's a pretty exciting move for us. So this is, this is just a dummy grade book. Don't worry, this isn't a real student. But this is a math standard. It looks like relationships. So this math standard, in this given class, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, has been assessed five times, right? Four of which have been summative assessments, one of which has been a formative assessment, like practice, right? And we can track and see how that student, how little Johnny is doing on that given competency or that given standard across time, okay? This is really, really powerful stuff. So we can see growth, and we can see if kids are dip, where kids are dipping, and where the low spots and where the high spots are. Second, what I can do in a classroom is, again, this is a dummy grade book over on the left-hand side here. I can get a sense of my classroom, and I know how many kids are doing well on a given standard and how many kids still need work on that. So on this top one, how the grade functions, I got eight kids that are in the green, okay? That means above standard or at standard, and four kids who are approaching standard or below standard. So I know in the classroom that I need to work on that a little bit more, and I know who those kids are that need to work on a little bit more. So it's really, it's huge for a teacher. And you can run any standard in your class on that. And to the right-hand side on this chart, this is New Hampshire statewide assessment for comparison. And I think this is important for a couple reasons. One is it, so the New Hampshire statewide assessment measures the exact same architecture of standards that we built in at SAU 21. So we're really getting apples-to-apples comparisons. So if a kid's not doing so well on a given standard in my class, I can go over to the SAS and see, okay? Is that also appearing on the SAS, okay? So that's one reason. It's just kind of a cross-check for us. The second reason is you can get the exact same kind of color coding with your students on the SAS as you can with the grade book. So again, just that kind of apples-to-apples comparison of how students are doing and just one more triangulation measure for students. So we talked about where students are. We talked about where teachers are. This is a quick little screencast. It's no more than a minute on what parents can expect in terms of competency reporting and how they can dig into their students' performance, okay? So given time, I will play. Hope it will have some.
Hello. I'd like to show you what to expect when you log into the student-parent portal for SAU 21. I'm gonna start here with the basics. So as soon as you log in, you'll see all of the classes your student is currently enrolled in. To the left of that, you'll see any attendance that has been recorded. And over to the right, you'll see a couple columns, marked T1, T2, and T3 with little i's and brackets. These are the information buttons if you want to see more information about these specific courses. So that's where we're gonna go first. Let's look at the Grade 5 Math T1 info we have in here. So when you click on that, first you see the information about the course up top. If the teacher has entered any comments for the final grade of this course, they will show here. If the course has a description entered, that will show right below it. Down here at the bottom are the assignments. So the first thing you'll see is all of the names of the assignments, and next to that are these standards buttons. The key for these icons can be found at the bottom of the page. But these standards buttons are the most important thing. So let's look at this Intro to Geometry test. Here you can see all of the standards that are associated with this assignment. And over to the right, you can see what your student scored on each of those standards. So if we open up all of these, you can see that a range of things have been assessed during T1 for this class. But if you want more information about what each of these standards means, we'll need to look at the bigger picture. So up at the top here, we've been looking at grades and attendance. There's another tab called Standards Grades. I'm gonna go ahead and click on that. And once again, you'll see all of the classes your student is currently in. I'm gonna open up Grade 5 Mathematics. You can see here a much larger list of all of the standards and competencies that have been assessed so far in this course. So let's look at this Relationships standard right here. You can see during T1, the student earned a 3. I'm gonna click on that 3. And here we get some more info. We can get these standard name at the top. Right underneath that is the description, as well as the term we're looking at and the teacher of this class. And at the bottom, if any comments have been entered on this particular standard, they will display right here. And as you can see, not only do we have a lot here in math, but there's language arts, science. So each one of your classes should have a list of these different standards and what your student has currently earned. Between this screen and back to the grades and attendance and the information button here, you should be able to track how well your student is doing in all of their classes.
Okay, so I think the point is made in terms of information, right? Rather than just a numerical grade, what we're able to do now that we've built this architecture is kind of open up student performance in a way that we haven't before. We're excited about it. I know Lauren, Lauren, the curriculum coordinator here, has been working really hard on it. And the teachers have been working on their assessments in order to make this happen and also working on their grade books. So we're excited to make this move. Obviously, this isn't going to come out until the end of trimester 1, 2021. So we've got a lot of time to communicate with moms and dads. We've got a lot of work to do around communication with moms and dads. But this is where we see our grading and reporting going at Seabrook Middle and actually across the entire SAU. We're pretty excited about it. I will not play this.
I'd like to show you what to expect when you log into.
Okay, good. Really quickly, I mentioned the habits of learning and use of the skills such as communication, self-direction, innovation, and collaboration that are important. We want to reflect, but they're not academic measures. Those will also be reflected on our reporting mechanism same way as the standards are. So proposed fall reporting, and this is across the SAU, by the way. Elementary level is going to be the same. Moms and dads, you're gonna see the same thing. You have just one codified list of competencies and standards for the report card. What we'd like to do in the middle levels is keep the 1 through 4 scale. We've actually defined SAU-wide rubrics for those habits of learning, and they will be rolled out at the district level. And we would like to remove that convergence scale, that mathematical operation that converts all the 2s and 3s and 4s into a 100th scale. So that's where we see us, see our SAU going, moving into the fall of 2021. Just to hit on a couple anticipated questions, how is this gonna affect students moving in and out of the districts? The good news is, like I said, we built this on the architecture of Common Core State Standards and Next Gen Science Standards. So any school that a student moves into or moves out of is going to understand these measuring tools. How will I know whether my child is successful? I think that's pretty plain to see. I think you're just getting a lot more information in the model that we're building as opposed to the traditional model. And not to mention, if your student needs extra help, there's a lot more diagnostic information that we can pull to help students who need support in given areas. And then how will this change play in the high school placement? We spent a lot of time on this. We've actually had teams of teachers throughout the course of last year, culminating in June, actually, where we had the high school teachers and middle school teachers sit down at a common table and look at the transition from middle school, excuse me, middle school to high school, and understand how that would affect placements, how that would affect curriculum. And incidentally, the high school has started to adopt this model, this architecture of measurement. So if I were a betting man, I would say that this model is actually gonna kind of grandfather us in as we move from middle school to high school. So I'm gonna stop there. And this is a picture of where we are and where we want to be. But I'm happy to respond to questions. I wanted to frame this as a celebration, frankly. But I also want to make sure that we communicate well and that we're transparent about this whole thing as we move throughout it, because it's important.
Any questions on the board? Thank you.
All right, easy. I'm all set then.
We're gonna have, go ahead and move on to the reopening plan for school this year.
Okay. So I shared this out with the board and with faculty in the community last Monday, August 5. This draft is the work of our administrative team following the guidance that's been provided through CDC and New Hampshire DHHS. Sorry, can folks hear me okay in the back? Trying to use my inside teacher voice.
You guys, the students are gonna come over.
Yeah, please. So CDC writes guidance for a national level. We tried to look at what New Hampshire DHHS was talking about for New Hampshire and use that as our guiding principles. I would say the number one thing is that we want students here in person. The goal is to bring them back in person and keep them here in person. So the plan is designed to help them do that. It will likely change and evolve. We know that data has changed almost daily over the last week as far as the Delta variant and the impact here in New Hampshire. And the mitigation steps, as written in this plan, are tied to the community transmission level. So we'll talk more about that in a minute. We expect to be in person for full school dates. Though if needed, we will adjust that schedule. We are not planning to offer a remote learning academy this year. Belax, the Virtual Learning Academy Charter School, it's a New Hampshire free charter school, is the option that we would suggest to parents who wish to have their children or who don't wish to have their children attend school. And you can work through the school principals and counselors to accomplish that. Athletics and co-curriculars. Again, at this time, we expect those to be in place and happening for children. We know those are an important part of Children's Day and their full school experience. Transportation. Federal guidance tells us that masks are required on transportation, and it specifically mentions school buses as transportation. So that will be a requirement for all children. We are expecting our buses to be full. We will maximize spacing as best we can, but we are anticipating that there will be bus routes where we cannot maintain three feet of distancing on buses. So we just want to be clear about that. Masks are required, but we may not be able to maintain three feet. Health protocols. So again, we're looking at what New Hampshire DHHS has recommended. New Hampshire DHHS's last call with schools was July 23. They are scheduled to have another one tomorrow. So we may have additional information as soon as tomorrow, but this meeting is today, and we're operating with what we currently know. As far as the screening that parents conducted last year through Pickup Patrol, we are not intending to continue them with Pickup Patrol. We are asking that families and staff members continue to do that self-screening on a daily basis. If you have symptoms on the COVID list, you should stay home and get checked. So the indicators. New Hampshire has three zones. A green, minimal transmission, yellow, moderate transmission, and red, substantial transmission. And those correspond to both the number of cases over the last 14 days per 100,000 people in the population as well as the test positivity rate. So those were included in the plan. And then our mitigating, mitigation strategies, which I'll talk about in just a second, correspond to that. So when we are in green and yellow and red, masks are required on buses. In the green and yellow, the mild and moderate transmission level zones, we are recommending masks indoors. They would be required in the red or the high transmission zone. And that, again, is listening to guidance from New Hampshire DHHS. Masks would not be required outdoors at any time based on the information from DHHS. While we are in the green and yellow zones, we will maintain that three feet of distance as best we can. Again, children are children, and sometimes they are going to step outside of that, but we will do our best to maintain that. And that will remain a minimum distance if we, in the red zone. Class cohorting. We don't anticipate keeping classes segregated or having those smaller groups. They will be full-size classes in the green and yellow zones. If we move into the red zone, we may look to keep classes separate from one another. We are currently in the red zone, but we may minimize that cross-proffing of classes. Cleaning protocols that were in place last year. Hand-washing routines, covering our mouths when we cough. All of those things remain in place no matter what color transmission zone we are in. As do, I mentioned, that daily screening, asking people to check that before they come to school. Stay home if you're ill. Those all are in place no matter the transmission level. Athletics and co-curricular. Normal participation in green and yellow. And in the red zone, we will look at the guidance coming from NHIAA, New Hampshire Scholastic Athletic Association with respect to middle school sports and make determinations on that front. Field trips and travel. In the green and yellow zone, it's really a conversation between the principal and superintendent to assess the level of risk associated with the trip. An apple-picking trip, which is outdoors, is a pretty low risk. That would happen. If it were an overnight camp trip, then we were in the red zone, that's probably something we would say no to in that high transmission zone. Common spaces. So cafeterias, gymnasiums, libraries will be open in the green and yellow zones. In the red zone, there may be discussion about whether or not we need to shift the use of those spaces so that we don't have everybody in there at one time. For visitors, again, in the green and yellow, we'd be open for visitors and for outside organizations to use our schools, asking folks to come in, again, to comply with those screening protocols. In the substantial transmission, the red zones, we would not be open for visitors and not for use by outside organizations. I will say, the carve-out that we would have there is for our after-school programs, because that is serving the same population of students that we serve during the day. So we would not want to exclude them. We know that's an important piece for families. As always, if individual students or staff members require accommodations, we will work to make those available as needed and work through those on an individual basis. See, we will continue to use outdoor space as much as we can. That was, I think, added benefit for folks last year was realizing how much learning can happen outside and how beneficial that is for students and staff. We hope not to face a situation where we shift to remote learning. If we do, we expect it to be very time-limited. Like, it might be for a day or a couple of days, and that would come through guidance from DHHS. Or if there were some very unusual situation, as always, the superintendent, I, would have to make that determination. But I expect that to be, knock on wood, something that doesn't happen or very rarely. As far as access to food, we will have free breakfast and lunch throughout the upcoming school year through federal ESER funds. Again, that is a grant, a waiver that was provided by federal school lunch program. So that will remain available to all children. And if we were in a situation, again, where we had to go to remote for a couple of days, we would work with families to try to make food available as needed. Cleaning. Cleaning, again, our daily cleaning and disinfection efforts would be in place, paying particular attention to those high-use areas, doorknobs, light switches, those things that get a lot of touch. Personal protective equipment will be available as needed for people, so gloves, masks, gowns, I guess, the nurse should need them. HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system. So we use currently the highest filter levels that we can for the heating, ventilation system that we have. We'll continue to utilize fresh air intakes on those systems and to maximize that, running it before school opens, opening windows, all of those pieces. And social emotional support. So again, we know that the effects of COVID are still there for lots of our students. So you'll hear later in this meeting a little bit about some of the intended use of ESR funds, CARES Act funds to support social emotional learning. But there are a lot of initiatives already in place that will continue. So we want to focus on that support for those that and students. We did send out a survey. I think we received 18 responses from parents, guardians, family members in Seabrook, and an additional four or five from staff members here. I would say, fair to say that that was mixed. There are some people who feel the plan is fine, some people who feel masks should never be required, and others who feel that masks should always be required no matter what. So again, we are, our goal is to open school and keep school open while protecting the safety of staff and students. That's what the board would like to do.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. I don't know if I heard you, but did you say that we're currently in the red zone right now?
We are.
So if we were to stop school tomorrow, would they be wearing masks?
They would.
I just agree. That's crazy. So how, can we make a motion to both as a board, or are we up to doing that?
Yeah, I think it's the plan as a whole, or you can break it out into components. I will say, you have two collective bargaining agreements as a district that support the whole SAU. So that could present complications if things are different, but we will work through that. It is the board's discretion.
I'd like to see something more in our district rather than the whole Rockingham County. I think that makes more sense.
So there is a Seacoast breakout on that map. The public health regions are broken out in the state map. So if you look, well, you don't have access to this problem, and I'm not up to the screening.
Well, I was just looking at my cell.
Yeah.
So it looks like that there is 1,250 non-COVID cases right now in New Hampshire, but that includes Rockingham County, Grafton, Merrimack, Stratton, Heskey, I don't know. I mean, to me, that's not even our area.
So if you look on the state, the state COVID-19 interactive map, there are two pieces. One is the county level, and the second is the public health region. And there is a Seacoast public health region, which is also in the red. They are considered to be in that substantial transmission zone.
Because I'm looking at the site that you said we would be going off of, in New Hampshire, New Hampshire DHHS, DHHS site.
Yep, and this is the COVID-19 interactive map from that site. So it shows right now in the Seacoast, 137.9 cases per 100,000 population over the last 14 days with a test positivity rate of 5.4%.
To me, that's too low for our children to have to wear a mask every day. They did that last year and...
Break it down for children and adults. In our district, there was 19 cases. The school's hiring us at 21.
Fifty-sixteen now.
So Hampton, Hampton Falls, Seabrook, North Hampton, and...
The community that is total by town.
Yeah, right. So I think I'm more interested in local.
So transmission level data isn't available by town. But it would be a matter of taking that data every day that it's posted by DHHS and trying to figure out the population of every town and then doing that calculation, I guess, at our office level each day. I'm not sure that's the most efficient way to collect that information, but again, we'll do what we need to do.
Eighteen individuals under the age of eighteen and adults, with 44% being female and 56% being male. So there was 18 in that whole map that are children under the age of 18.
Okay, what's the, the board's pleasure? Would you like to get questions for us and then?
Sure.
Talk about it and maybe... Is there any questions from the audience? Can you raise your hand and come to podium and just introduce yourself and what your affiliation is to the school?
Hi, I'm Tina Jamburn. I drive you preschool buses. I don't want to put masks on those kids again. One thing, I can't babysit them while I'm driving. And for another thing, I have a niece that went and brought her baby, she's about three, to the doctors. And the doctor asked her, has she been wearing a mask? She goes, no, I've never put a mask on him. And he said, oh, because we're seeing lots of cases of children with bacterial pneumonia from wearing masks, and I don't want it on my kids anymore. I don't care. If they're pretty sick, we can stay home. I don't want it anymore.
Is there anybody else that likes to speak? Go ahead, just introduce yourself and your affiliation with the school.
Hi, my name's Caleb Scalari. I have a son who attends the school. A COVID vertical is .11. So an N95 mask, if you're having to wear the really, you know, the best of the best, that's only spiked down to go to .3. So when you're putting on these masks, you're inhibiting the kids breathing. But at the same time, it's like using a chain link fence to stop a handful of TikToks from going into your yard. You're making these kids feel confined, restricted, anxiety. You're making them feel a lot of things. So maybe you could feel safe? I don't think that's the greatest way to do things. The mortality rate of children is miserable. Their immune systems will beat this like nothing. If you're under 70, your immune system beats this. If you look at the CDC's website, across every age demographic, the similarities in mortality rates are staggeringly similar to influenza, which also has a .11 sign model here. So are we saying I'm going to wear a mask forever because influenza ain't the only way either? What are we doing then? We're torturing children for it. I think there should be a choice, not a requirement. And it's frustrating to see it. Like, my son begged to go to school for the last month of the year last year just so he could see his friends, but with tears in his eyes because he didn't want to wear a mask every day. And I think a lot of people's kids went through the same thing. And I think that as a school board, as a union, you guys represent the people. And the people of this town, I think, by a staggering majority, don't want to see their kids go through this again. But we also respect the rights of people to wear what they want to wear and feel safe in their own right. So that's all I have to say. Sorry if my voice is shaken.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So podium, just introduce yourself and your relationship to the school.
My name is Frank Seltzer. I have two kids who are here. She was a little uneasy over there when you said the new data that's come home. Well, my kids don't really know better, but you guys do. All right. Thirty-eight million cases of the flu from 2019 to 2020. In 2021, from 2020 to 2021, 1,000, no, 2,124 cases. So the mask worked for the COVID, but, I mean, for the flu, but not for the COVID? Doesn't make sense to me. My kids aren't wearing masks.
Good for you, Frank.
My name is Tricia Staudt, and I have a daughter here at the Super Middle School. My concern just came up when you mentioned that we are currently in the red. But yet, you have us sitting in this room, and you didn't require us to wear masks, and we're not sitting here for the part. So that kind of worried me at that moment, thinking that you said if we return back to school tomorrow, the children wouldn't even wear masks. But we're not required to right now. It just doesn't make sense to me, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Rebecca. I have two kids in the elementary school. And I guess my biggest concern is kind of what Jessica and Kelly were both saying with just how we're even looking at the metrics and what we're measuring from where. I know Rockingham County is huge, and, you know, people in Derry and Salem shouldn't be dictating what goes on here. And the same thing, even if you're looking at the Seacoast, are they counting Dover? Are they counting Portsmouth? Like, where are we getting the numbers from? I mean, it's just upsetting to think that, you know, our kids could have to wear masks when we might not have any cases. But because the area is in the red, we're punishing them? I don't know, it just, it feels wrong.
Can I get your last name?
Not.
Not?
Yep.
K-N-O-T-T?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Tarka. I have three kids in the system. I also drive bus seven. I think masks should be optional. I don't see any other drivers here, but if you're saying masks should be optional in school, I don't understand how you're going to get them to keep them on on the bus. That was already one of our biggest issues as drivers last year. I didn't have kids, I got kids down the bus every single day without a mask. Can I have another mask? I don't have any. If you're telling them they don't have to wear one in school, who's going to bring one? And make them put it on the bus? How many kids are going to be on the bus every day? Hey, you need to go to the office. You don't have masks? Yeah, it's mandatory. That's like not our, we're trying to get them there safe, but this isn't helping, like, saying they have to do that on the bus, but not in the school.
My name is Joyce Philpone. I'm here as a parent. I also work at the school, but I'm here as a parent right now. I have three boys in the middle school. Last year was really trying for the boys with the masks as a parent. I picked up a summer job at the rec full-time, and I'm really proud of the rec and the staff there. They have given these kids a lot of normalcy. And we run a summer program from K through eight, and they're all there with no masks. And they're at close counters, and they're friends, and they're playing basketball, and they're living the life that they had before COVID. We respect everyone's wishes. It's their body, their choice. I make the choice for my children. And I feel them even being asked if they were vaccinated is a very personal choice that they shouldn't be asked. So they shouldn't be made to wear something if they're not, because then you're... They're letting everybody know that they weren't. And that's my choice. They're under 18, and I made that choice for them, that I am really uncertain about it. I don't give them the flu shot. I'm very uncomfortable with the COVID shot for them. So that's something that they will not be having, no matter the requirements. And again, working at the rec and being around all these children, I can tell you, we have had zero cases of COVID through the rec through the summer. I respect everybody. I respect everybody's choice. So I would request masks be optional as well for those that want to wear it, should wear it, and those that feel more comfortable wearing it. But to put those kids in masks again, I feel like it's a radical choice after they've spent all summer without them together. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Macho. I don't have any children in this school. I do have a grandson. I don't really know him, but there's a, number one, Governor Sununu doesn't have a mask mandate. There is not a mask mandate in the state of New Hampshire. It is up to each individual to choose whether to wear a mask or not. Then, there's a New Hampshire Title X Public Health, Chapter 126 U, RSA Section 126 U4 states, "No school or facility shall use or threaten to use any of the following restraint and behavior control techniques: any physical restraint or containment technique that obstructs a child's respiratory airways or interferes a child's breathing or respiratory capacity or restricts the movement required for normal breathing." A mask, it limits your breathing, it controls you, and it has something mentally and physically it does to you. I have never worn a mask, not through this whole thing. I have lupus, I have been out of the state. These kids are being controlled, and it has to stop. And there's many doctors that have taken off in Facebook and not allowed them to speak because the CDC is running this country and they're not running it right. And kids shouldn't have to have the vaccination, they shouldn't have the land manners, they should live a normal life like every other child in this country. And it's not fair what's being done to these kids. I don't care if it's on a bus, I don't care if it's in the bathroom. We walk around every day, the markets are filled with people, and everybody's doing everything they want. And you see little kids being abused, crying because they don't want a mask on. I think it's about time these parents smarten up. You can do it if you want to, but it's time to take masks off these kids. Time to let them live again and be kids, not grown-ups, because they're losing their childhood wearing that mask. Now, you don't see a child smile, you don't see them laugh, you can't see them play. They live in terror because they're worried about what variant is going to come along because PCR tests find the flu, and we're treating it like COVID-19. It's the flu. Bad cases, yes, bad cases and everything. But it's time for all of this to stop. Your parents have got to wake up. Your kids are going through hell living like this. There's no need of that. I don't have a child in this school, but I'll be damned if I want my kid to walk around with a mask on every day of his life, have to get up and think he has to put it on to walk out that door to go to school. It's not right, and it needs to end. It needs to end.
Can I make a note about that PCR test? Because the FDA reviewed it, and it got rejected because it was picking up these things. So this PCR test at the CDC and everyone pushed as gospel to us, and we all took for gospel as the main format of testing, was rejected. Now, you have these vaccines, and you have the number of 2020, 2021 is the Moderna review. Of February of 2022 is Pfizer's review. June of 2022 is J and J's review. So until then, we're really all doing something that has not been fully reviewed by the FDA. To ask people and to judge people and to shame people by not wanting to take something that has not been fully reviewed, especially doing it to children, and that the mask being used as like an identifier of those who chose not to and those who did, all of this is horrific to me. I mean, I'm not going to let my kid be a lab rat. This ain't the Tuskegee experiment. I'm not getting $500 to put my body on the line for an experiment. When they get fully reviewed, then I'll make a conscious choice. And I think everybody should be afforded that right without being singled out. So, I mean, that's another thing that I wanted to add, but I was shaking like a leaf up there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Caleb Scalari.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Karen, and I have a daughter who will be in second grade. And I think for me, personally, my daughter had no problem wearing a mask. So I know that she's going to be resilient, she's going to do what she needs to do. My ask to the board and to the community of Seabrook is that the various stakeholders are in alignment. So if she has to wear a mask at school, it would be helpful if she wears a mask at rec. So she's going to rec camp right now, living her life. And so for me, as a parent, I have to figure out how I'd explain to her why she'd go to rec without one and then have to go to school for that. So that would be really important for me, that that was all in alignment. And then last thing is, I am for whatever keeps my kid in school all day, every day next year. She needs that, and I need that, and I will do whatever it takes to make sure that that can happen. She's an only child, and so when remote, it was very difficult for her. So as a stakeholder here, I will do what needs to be done. My ask is that there's consistency across the various stakeholders that she will see within her week. And that we do that to keep our kids as safe as possible. I have seen young people very sick with this. I'm not saying that will happen to my daughter or not. But that will be my ask as a parent of a student in elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Marcy Seltzer. Most of you know me. I have one child in high school, three, two in middle, one in elementary. And I think we should have it optional. I mean, if we're in the red, then if you want to send your child with a mask, then send a child with a mask. I mean, they've been with their friends all summer long. We've been to countless places where there's hundreds of people that we don't know any of them, and nobody has a mask on. I mean, I just honestly think it should be left up to the parents, whether they want to send their kids with a mask or not. I mean, they're only children once. Like, my kid in high school, he missed out his eighth, basically, his whole eighth grade year because when this started. And I'm done watching their lives just be ruined. I mean, when you, when you're older, what do you look back on? Your childhood. And it's being ruined by this pandemic. And let's move forward. I mean, why would we go backwards after the summer, which I understand, different variants and stuff? But they've been around hundreds of people, and they've been absolutely fun. And like she just said, they're at camp together, and then you gotta go back to school? They're not going to want to go to school because they're not going to want to sit here with masks all day. They're not going to have to be reminded to be so far away from their friend that they just spent the night with. Like, it's a little ridiculous, and I'm hoping that we can go back to normalcy. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan. And I have one child that's actually going into sixth grade this year. I'm going to try and get this out without being emotional. I'm going to do my best. But since COVID, and they stopped going to school and started remote, my son has been suffering with depression, anxiety, you name it. I've had him, well, he's still in therapy. I can do this. Like, life needs to start again because I can go through anything. I'm strong, I can do it. But to watch my child go through it and try and tell him every single day that it's going to be okay and we're going to get through it, that's not easy. Because I know deep down inside that I'm dying. So I can just imagine how he feels. It needs to end. I can't do this. He won't wear a mask ever. Ever again will he wear a mask. So please, I'm asking you, can we just move on with our lives? Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak? Can you just introduce yourself and your affiliation?
Good to see everybody, folks. I'm Anthony Wallace, president of Seacoast.
Good to see everybody, folks. I'm Anthony Wallace, president of Secoast Education Association. Um, I appreciate the chance to address a lot more folks than I thought would be here. Uh, good to see everybody in person. Um, thank you for your work on behalf of students and staff in SAU twenty-one. Uh, after performing so admirably last year, teachers and staff in Seabrook are really excited about the upcoming return to school and continuing to create success and joy in working with their students. We have a lot of parents here, so teachers are definitely looking forward to seeing everybody again and soon. Maybe Tuesday, but that's another story. We are all meeting today amidst both a time of healing from a very challenging past school year and a rapidly evolving, excuse me, a rapidly evolving situation regarding the accelerating case counts of COVID-19's Delta variant. School boards, superintendents, families, and teachers are all monitoring these developments and are working together to provide the best educational and social emotional opportunities for students while providing a safe and healthy environment for our students and for our staff. As a community, we will again face challenges during the ongoing pandemic. Let us remember that these challenges are not insurmountable with planning, commitment, and teamwork, and that the health and safety of our students, families, and communities and our staff is not a political issue. Together, we can ensure the continuity of in-person education and the social emotional well-being of our students by adhering to safety protocols. We all have a role to play in keeping our students in school all year and safe. We mean it when we say we are all in this together. We remain in awe of the resilience that our staff, our schools, and our community have displayed together uh, this past year. And we look forward to the continued success for our students in Seabrook. Thank you so much for your time and for your efforts on behalf of this community.
Who do all of you think a pl- a pandemic is? Really? I want to know how many people have to stick to make a pandemic.
And where do they be so?
If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium, introduce yourself, and let's try to keep it down a little bit.
I would like to know what justifies this as being a pandemic. I want to know how many kids have died under the age of eighteen and S- SAU twenty-one are in New Hampshire period. I want to know. Has any of you known that kids die, eighteen years old? Zero. Yeah. Look at the chart. Who are they being afraid of? If you want your teachers to get a vaccination and put that garbage into your body, go for it. But you can't keep treating kids this way. It's time to end it all. It's time to stop it. Get off the mask. Live again. My God, you're living, you're living like we're all dying. We're not. I'm living proof. I've been out of state. I've been around people with COVID. You don't get it. COVID isn't, there's doctors and doctors that can't speak because everybody shuts them up. Don't speak. Don't tell what's going on. Hide everything. Don't tell the truth. There's more going on than just the mask. And it's time to end, end it all. It's not right and it's not fair to all these kids. And I wouldn't let my kid do it. And I would come here and I would fight you every day because my kid wouldn't put a mask on his face. And he wouldn't put a vaccination in his body because you're treating them like that. I don't know what you're treating them like. I can't even believe what you did to them last year. You took a childhood year away. For what? Who died? How many kids lost kids last year? Anybody lose a kid last year? Anybody lose a kid at all? No. So you explain to me why you're doing this. We just want to know. How many kids died? How many times are we going to run the PCR tests so we can prove they've got COVID? Because it's a frigging flu. And it's time to stop. It's time to stop all of this garbage. I've watched it. It's driving me nuts to see these kids walk around with a mask on and there's no need of that. They need to live again. It's time to live your life. Stop living like there's a pandemic. There's not. There's not a pandemic.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
I have a question. If the PCR test was rejected by the FDA, correct?
Yes.
They rejected it, turned all those picking up the influenza and that's how influenza magically disappeared for a year. Um, and then of course the massive amount of testing would pick up lots more cases, right? That's just how that works because we were all getting tested for the flu. All right, so have, how did they magically suddenly isolate the Delta variant? And then start diagnosing the Delta variant? Or are they just using it to explain a way that the vaccine, the people who caught, who had, who got the vaccines are, you know, spreading it as well?
There's the only.
Because I think that's what it is. I'm pretty sure it's going to go Delta, Delta plus plus, and then Lambda, Lambda will come. There's actually a list that you can kind of get to the world that can have it formed if you want to look, but that's a different story. We're not going to go down rapid polls. But the point is, they've never isolated the Delta, Delta variant. They haven't. So how are they diagnosing it? So, and then we, no matter what variant you get, science always says variants get weaker. Science will change. Variants are always weaker. Variants don't get stronger. No variant will ever be stronger than the original. That's just science. You cannot deny science. And I know a lot of people like to say, I believe science. Well, believe the science on that one. So no variant's going to be more deadly. So when it's all said and done, again, go to the CDC website, go ahead and look at the mortality rates to every single age demographic. Look at the comorbidities, compare it to influenza. Look at the spore size. You'll be able to compare that to influenza. They're both point one one nanos. So the mask didn't make one go away. I love that narrative. It makes no sense, but people love saying it. Um, go ahead and look at all these things and you tell me, what the hell are we doing to these kids? We either were doing it forever because, you know, influenza ain't going to go away. That vaccine, every year, right? That's good, right? Everybody gets it anyway. The ba- the, what makes you think anything's going to change? They have not isolated anything. They're going to keep diagnosing things. They're going to sell your booster shots for every variant they come. And they won't sell it to us. They'll just sell it to us unwidely. The taxpayer will continue to fund these things. The people will just get afraid. It's all nonsense. It's really. I've done, sorry, I'm quiet.
Madam Superintendent Frank Selther again. Um, I, I'll ask you the same question I asked my employer. My employer told me that I could stop wearing a mask if I got a vaccination. We'll call it vaccination. Anyway, um, I asked them, can you guarantee that it's not going to be detrimental to my health in any way? Can you guarantee that putting a mask on my kid's face isn't going to be detrimental in any way to their health? Because I can tell you, I work in, uh, permissible exposure limits, I work. And the CDC will tell you that point zero five percent over a time-weighted uh, average of eight hours, you're not supposed to be breathing in that much, anything over that for CO2. That's what we breathe out. Where's it going when we breathe it out? You know, we're going to keep breathing it back in. That's, that's going to cause dizziness, cause stomach acid to build. That's, that's something I don't want my kids going through. I had to go through it for a year. Not again. So I ask you, what guarantees can you give us that our kids aren't going to be harmed or affected by this adversely? Any?
Typically, we don't respond during public comments, so I, I'm looking.
Okay, I'll finish up then and go with my question.
I'm going to leave this part. Heather Emerson, I'm your PTO president and I have three kids in the school, kindergarten, third grade, and eighth grade this year. I have a question. If we go back to this yellow, red, green scale, how often does this change? And how are the kids going to respond to that? You know, one week or three days a week, we're wearing a mask. Two days, we're wearing a mask, not, you know, how are they going to adjust that? The same with cafeteria. If we're in the red, we're not using open spaces. So then one week they're having lunch in their classrooms. The next week they're having lunch in the cafeteria. How is that going to affect them, especially the younger ones? Like Anthony, he's older. He can, he's resilient that way. He's an eighth grader. He just goes with the flow. My Emily is starting kindergarten. She's only in school two hours a day last year. She had great teachers. She wore her mask, but now it's going to be a big change for her. And if I tell her one week, no mask, next week, mask. How is that going to affect them? And in the red, that means I shouldn't have PTO meetings either. I don't like that. We have no parent participation in the PTO because I cannot do that in the school when we're in the red and when wearing the masks. And I won't do it because it's going against what the school's procedure is. It's not fair. I just want to know the answers to those questions and how you guys think that will affect the kids and how the change that, it's going to affect the teachers too, to, and the control. And how, is there going to be punishments for no masks? So if my child one week has a mask on and then the next week he doesn't have the mask on, but the following week he does and he takes it off multiple times, are we getting in trouble? Are we getting phone calls home eight thousand times a week because your kid took a mask off again? But last week they were allowed to have them. Like, are those things going to come into play? Is it going to take up more of these teachers' times and staff's times where you can't educate our kids? You're worrying about the masks and the hand washing. I get it. I agree with some of it, but I think the masks changing, this whole scale is going to be way too much for them to handle. And I don't know how the staff is going to handle it either. You've got staff that's going to have to change on a whim, especially cafeteria. I worked on the bus delivering lunches to the town this year with Tina. And those cafeteria workers are so hard for them to deliver those lunches to classrooms one week and then into cafeteria next. I, I don't see how that's possible. So are we going to find out those things or how our school's going to function in that way?
Hi, everyone. My name is Josh Ivan. Um, I have a daughter and she's three. Um, I have a question about the mask breaks. Um, last year, uh, my daughter came home quite a few times and said that mask breaks weren't given to her for class because something happened in class where they got it taken away from them. And this was pretty unsettling considering the school was requiring the mask to be worn. So, um, I, I just want to make sure that this year, if that's what ends up happening, that these mask breaks are absolutely given and they aren't held over the students as a punishment if they don't perform the way that they need to perform in the school. I feel like last year it was really appalling to hear that because a kid acted up in seventh grade, that my daughter couldn't get a mask break. And it was told to us by the school that those would be given throughout the day. So it was really concerning then. And I hope that this year, if the school decides to implement masks, that they will have required mask breaks and it won't be a choice of the discretion of the teacher. Um, this obviously is something that affects children and not, nobody's used to wearing a mask all day long. I don't do it. Nobody I know does it. But if it is going to be required, the kids need a break. They need a break physically, they need a break psychologically to just get that off their face, see their friends' faces and get a little bit of a break. So I ask all of you, if that is the case this year, I don't want to see my kid come home and tell me they lost their mask break because some kid acted up in class. That's all.
Uh, Rachel, I just want to touch on his. My daughter was part-time last year. And at one point they changed cohorts, so her class changed. She ended up stopping going to school completely because some teachers were allowing them to play outside, some teachers were not allowing them outside. You know, you're, you're watching other grades outside doing fun things, you know, taking your mask off and everything, but then she's like, I'm done. I'm, we're getting in trouble. We have to stand there. We have to be six feet apart. But I drive into the school and I see kids hanging on each other, walking out into the woods with no masks. Like, what do you mean? You can't do something. You know, she used to take her basketball or her football to play and she's like, I can't take that anymore. We're not allowed to play. But those kids are playing. So if, if their mask is, has to be mandated in the red zone, I ask that it's universal. What happens with every teacher needs through middle school, not just eighth grade, seventh grade, or sixth grade, or fourth, fifth grade. The whole teacher body needs to be on the same page because kids are watching out the window. They see what other kids are doing. And the other one would be last year during the heat. If we're in the red zone and it's ninety degrees outside, why are we not outside completely or why are we in school? I mean, I was on the bus for half hour. I don't know why they sat in school all day for eight, seven, eight hours or however long it is with a mask on. I mean, it, that's a lot. And I thought we weren't supposed to be in school last year if it was that hot. I'm not sure if that was something I was told wrong. But if the red zone is something that happens when it is that hot, I think there needs to be something in place for that. I mean, how many kids actually showed up to school those couple of days? It, do, hopefully someone has some numbers on that to really see if that was effective in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else else called for?
Lambda's coming next. So get ready for Lambda, everybody, because after Delta comes Lambda.
Hi, Yellow Right. I hate speaking in front of people, but I think the mask should be optional. I think it's an emotional tool on our children and it's causing more problems than COVID for kids.
Thank you. Yellow.
I'm sorry.
Yellow Right.
Yellow Right.
Thank God we only get twenty-six letters in the alphabet, huh?
Okay. Um, so that's it for, um, questions, um, looking for, um, some discussion with the board, um, and.
So, can I speak?
Sure.
Okay. So I was just looking at this website and it's really confusing to me because on August third, Rockingham County had forty-five cases, but then on the sixth, they had forty-five. And then on the ninth, Rockingham had a pet, a hundred and thirteen, but on the tenth, they had ten?
Ten.
So how did we go from August ninth in Rockingham of having a hundred and thirteen cases yesterday to today we have ten? And this is the site that we're referring to, that we're going to go, we're going to, that we're going to go by every day? When it seems like to me that the numbers don't even jive.
Does anybody have any suggestions? I definitely think that these numbers are a way to, um, just not even feasible.
I think we should go by Rockingham County. I think we need to make a vote.
Well, I don't think we should go by Rockingham.
No, but I'm, right.
I think we should be local. We need to come up with a formula for our district, districts. SAU twenty-one, I'd like to come up with a formula for that. And these numbers would almost be fine with me for SAU twenty-one.
Okay.
So, is there any other input? Because I'm, I'm going to make a motion that, um, we keep this, uh, these numbers here, the, the, the green, the yellow, the red. But those numbers be within our district, SAU twenty-one district. If there's more, if there's less than fifty cases in SAU twenty-one, we're in the green. If there's less than fifty to ninety-nine, we're in the yellow. But I don't think that it's fair for us to use for the whole of Rockingham County when you've got cities. I mean, we're small towns on the seashore and I, I think that we need to get back to normalcy. We, we are definitely hurting these kids more than helping them. And, you know, I think that parents should have the choice to put a mask on their child or not. But if there's some huge risk or outbreak, then, you know, let's be fair. Yeah. Let's, let's take care of that. But I think these numbers are just, they're, they're, they're not jiving with me. People have choice, wear a mask, don't wear a mask, get vaccinated, don't get vaccinated. All the adults in this building that work here, they have a choice to get vaccinated or not. Um, any child over twelve has, their parents have a choice to vaccinate them. Let's give the people a choice to not get vaccinated and not wear a mask if they, and I'm not anti-vaxxer. I, I have my vaccine. But it's just, I'm not, I don't want to wear a mask anymore either. I had one on today to go to a doctor's appointment for a half hour and it was warm. Just for a half hour because I haven't worn it for months. So I can't, I, I can't even imagine going back to wearing one eight hours a day and marking. So, I've, that's my motion.
Parents need to make a decision for their own children.
I'm going to make a motion that, um, masks be optional. Um, and we follow these guidelines. And if we're in the red of a hundred or more cases in SAU twenty-one in this district, then yeah, let, let's be cautious. Um. Are we including Hampton? Because Hampton's not in our district.
They're not in our district.
Well, they were in high school. Yeah. But um they're not, they they don't, they're not us.
So we won't have access to percent positivity rate by town, I don't think, but we have access to new cases. I won't have, it's gonna be very difficult to track that over fourteen-day periods. It's gonna be day to day. So I think to the person's point about how do you count that? And are you gonna be going back and forth day to day? I think you're more likely that you'll be back and forth day to day. Um whereas the larger region, where lots of our families travel to and from for work, um you have trend lines that that evolve at a little bit more nuanced pace. So just putting that up.
I feel like we should even, do we have to go by this? I feel like it should just be optional across the board.
Absolutely.
I just I just have.
Such an easy solution.
I have a question on um buses. I understand that they are mandated for pub for um public transportation. Are we considered public transportation because you're a school of this district?
According to the Federal Department of Transportation and the further guidance that we received from New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services on July twenty-third, yes. All public school buses in New Hampshire fall under that category.
So does that mean if we were decided, if the board decided not to push masks on the bus, would we be in violation of something?
Uh well, you're not complying with the federal law. The transportation company is supposed to be fined for that.
So it's not the bus company that would be.
Well, I'm sure they'll pass those laws like us if our policies don't align.
Why didn't you wear the summer suit?
So are you sure that's a law?
I'm I'm telling you what we're told by Dr. Chan in a call on July twenty-third and what I found subsequently in the federal transportation frequently asked questions document that was published. That's linked in the reopening guidance.
I guess I'm looking for a motion if anybody wants to.
I'll make a motion that we make masks now optional across the board. And if we get in a high zone and parents want to put a mask on their child or they wanna keep their child home, they do so.
So.
So a motion to make masks optional and that parents decide.
For their children.
For their children. To wear a mask or not.
Across the board.
Across the board, like across the
The gathering.
School district, for across the Seabrook School District.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Seabrook District, wide for Seabrook Schools.
I'm looking something up the bus right now, but I'm just.
Well, let's table the bus until we get a little more information. We have another meeting on uh next Tuesday um to do like some goals and stuff. So let's get some more information, I think, on that to actually specify, you know.
Can I can I just say for this first student that we're always one of those drivers that every choice comes down to you guys. We always have to refer back to the school. It's not our actual offer. I'm not sure if that's something they just say to us to keep us quiet, but.
Well, actually, it was a company policy, first student company policy for masks.
That's good to know.
Yeah, but so that's another problem that we need to dig into. So but we also pay for those buses, so um.
So just to make sure I have the right motion, I have a motion to make masks optional and that parents decide for their children to wear masks or not at school. At school, district-wide for Seabrook Schools.
Yes.
Motion by Health and Human.
Jen seconded that.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion?
So will we make another motion to pass this with the exception of the mask?
Um yeah, is there are there any other parts of this other than the mask?
Seems like it's.
Yes.
So what would happen in the case of being removed from school or not?
With respect to what?
How would that affect?
We're not doing that.
Like our grant?
No, but I mean.
On these graphs as you know, if it came down, what's the what's the rate of you, what would be expected of?
We have to adjust, we're not expecting to close schools unilaterally. It would be more in the case of an outbreak.
Okay.
All right, and they would determine what that.
Sorry, I don't know if you guys see the vote on your screens or not.
Oh, oh, sorry. Oh, I see it. Sorry, I was.
That's okay. Do you still want me to call on?
I'm not seeing it. Hold on.
It's under the return to school guidance?
See it.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you guys gonna enter your vote or? I am not seeing it come through.
You're not connected.
Oh. Whoops.
I got zipped off too.
So that's.
I do too.
Yeah, we all lost ours.
Hey.
So yeah, I'm not connected, so I'm gonna enter the yes.
Of course, yes.
Jessica. Jennifer.
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Okay.
Oh, it won't even save it right now. Is there a gag on school? Password for. It's not even, it won't save my.
The password.
There's no password for the guest internet. We have to be on Seabrook guest. But Seabrook is secure, it's connected to you. But I don't, we don't have a password for that.
Well, now I lost it.
Got connected again.
Yeah, they're saying no, we're gonna move up the audit report.
I have it now. I got it.
Actually, it's just. I'm sorry.
We didn't have a place for that.
I'll I'm back up again.
Josh, if you could, I would like to um acknowledge the reports.
Are here, maybe not. Yeah. All right, so let's see. We do have to um go to our minutes, so we need to approve our minutes from um June eighth and um July sixth.
Do you announce the results of that one?
It was four.
It was four zero.
Zero.
It's not saving, so I just wrote it down. I don't know if I can go up to.
While we're waiting, I do have a question. Um I know we usually do like a um ice cream social beginning of the school year. Is there anything planned for that as far as like um kids meeting their teachers or anything like that? As of right now, we're in the red of visitors, so we have we have not had any.
We've talked about, so we have an admin meeting later this week to kind of talk with all the admin in the SAU. So you know, particularly I'm looking at, is there something we can do for preschool and kindergarten especially?
At least, yeah.
Even I have some first graders, but it's their first time in a school. So um you know, all explore options outside and we've talked about, you know, for people's comfort too. Maybe it's an outside and an online, but you know, you need to talk about that with the admin and then talk to the staff and everything too. We wanna we want our kids, we want them to be their teacher. I just don't know if we're giving a whole.
So so now this brings me to another question. We're not having an ice cream social because we're in the red, so are we gonna keep, is this does, does this mean that?
Cancel that.
I know, we canceled the mask, but now I'm on heard of Jess. That's what you meant, Jess. Like so now we're not gonna have the kid, the kids aren't gonna be enjoying anything if we're in the red according to those numbers. You know what I mean? I mean, how far do we go with this? Because according to right now, we're in the red, can't have an ice cream social, but all the kids are in the red. Going Candy Lake, going to the water country, going hiking today.
So I think there's a lot of information ins inside of that that um report. I I um maybe, I mean, keep keep the vote we just did with the mask, but let's like dig into it so you guys can have specific questions or areas that you wanna visit on that at at our meeting um or actually on next week, I think, that way.
Well, I think that if we're looking at changing the scale, that also is gonna change the color where we are too.
Okay, so I think that maybe, you know, look into that. Um if you have suggestions, then that would be the time to do it. But it does just a lot of information on there, so just sit here and go through blindly, I guess. Because we'll be here all night. Um so looking for a a motion on July eighth and um July, I mean, June eighth and July sixth um minutes. I'll make a motion to accept um July eighth minutes.
I'll second that.
June eighth, sorry. All those in favor? Wasn't here for one of them.
I don't know.
Just staying for both.
If you want to.
Yeah. And yeah, you it was July fifth meeting that you were, we tried to get on that one.
So July sixth.
She wasn't.
Right, I wasn't here, so.
Right, but are you making the same motion or not?
For July sixth. Yeah.
And the second on that one?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right. You weren't there.
Same.
I didn't know.
Or you're stating from the June eighth one?
No.
Okay. So that's. July sixth is three zero one, one extension, which is.
Yeah.
Got it. Got it.
All right, so we have um superintendent reports, curriculum assessments, uh student services report, um SES principal report, SMS, SMS principal report, facilities update. Um unless there's something that jumps out at you guys that you wanna kind of throw out there for informational purposes, um we can't really open these. Um they will be on the SAU website for anybody to read um at a later date. Um so if there's anything you guys wanna share real quick, go ahead and um do that from your reports.
Peter Moore is here, who talked about last time.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if the board.
Yeah.
Wants him to present.
Sure.
For myself.
Yeah, but you guys are good. Okay.
I had a lot of thank yous in there to people, so please read it because they do deserve it.
Absolutely. Um Peter, if you wanna come to the podium and introduce yourself and get your report.
My name is Peter Moore. I'm the facilities director here at the Seabrook School District. Um over the past month, I had turned in my report. I don't know if you guys have seen it or not. Uh we have done some few work, a few things around here. We um we split up the computer lab. Uh we made free move rooms over there. Um we have done some remodeling to the sixth and seventh grade. Uh they've been repainted. Um we had the air filters that we changed constantly to make sure that those are up to par. Um we've done our monthly checks with the fire extinguishers, replaced ones that needed to be replaced. Uh the ones that, you know, are getting old, we have changed out. Uh we had done some renovation upstairs. Uh we repainted everything that was upstairs, repaired some of the windows that were out there. We've relocated ESRO from down by the fifth grade. We moved him up to the cafeteria, so it's more centralized between both schools. Um we've also relocated the IT department out to the trailer, just so that, you know, he's more centralized and stayed in that area. Uh we've done our regular monthly required underground storage tank tests. Um we've we've had a few pickups with them, but they are being repaid. Um and we just recently had some i-mash stations that were replaced. Uh they weren't under pressure, so we had those replaced as well. So but that's pretty much what we have been doing for the month of July. There's been on and end stuff. Uh you know, small things that aren't really too big, so. We uh will be turning in these reports every month for everybody to see. So if there's any questions, I'll answer them.
I have a couple of questions. Um now, I knew that you were looking for uh your secretary position.
Yes.
All right, is that still an open position or do you?
As of Friday night, um in the morning, it's being filled, yes.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Awesome. And the other question I was about the trees being taken down of Woodland, we had discussed um at a board meeting a few months ago. Do we have like a ETA on that or where that's the point?
Um are you talking about the ones that are for the um ropes course?
Yeah, the rope scores and the nature trail that's out there.
Yeah, um the trees on the uh on the ropes course have been removed. Uh they were dropped. Um boy scouts were supposed to come over and move them, but they never did, so we'll have to clean that up. Um and then as for the trees out there, I did check in with um Woodlands and they said it can be done, it just has to be, the stops have to stay behind.
Cool, awesome. Okay, last.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jess Smith, do you want to just make a comment?
Of course.
Uh I I just wanna on record thank Peter and the facilities team. They've just been amazing. Peter really stepped up to the to the challenge in his new leadership role. Um and he's it's haven't lost his stuff. He's he's just been incredible. And the team has really been asked to do a lot this past year, um just like, you know, much of our school staff. Um they've really um taken to the challenge, so so thank you to the facilities.
Yeah, um policies, um second read, kind of approval.
So this is a list of seventy-four policies that you did a first read on. They were reviewed at the joint board and formally adopt them. There's more needs to vote.
I'll make a motion to adopt them as written. I'll second. All those in favor? All right.
All for you? All right. Motion passed.
Uh continuing business, we have um Seabrook withdrawal and SAU twenty-one discussion. I don't really have any further on that. If there's any other status, I can jump in there. All right, um new business audit questionnaire.
Thank you. So as you're aware, uh we do conduct uh an annual audit um which we uh contract with Plodrick and Sanderson as an independent um outside firm. Um as part of that process, they go through all of our financial statements, they look at our financial controls, um our policies, um and um and one one item is a questionnaire for the board members um that they ask uh for you to complete. So we have included that questionnaire um on board docs, which you can't access right now. Um however, um we have pre-populated answers that um, you know, based on historical However, um, we have pre-populated answers, um, you know, based on historical, because they're the same questions every year. However, if those are not your answer, please let me know. And you can have separate answers, because you, you know, you may have a perception different from another board member. So please speak up if, if any of these questions and answers are incorrect or not what you feel. But I'll run through the questions, um, and, and ask you to respond, or I can, you know, provide you what, um, you know, the, the relevant information. So the first couple of questions are based on your perceptions. So do you have any knowledge or suspicions of fraud affecting your entity?
No.
Have you received any communications from employees, former employees, regulators or others alleging fraud?
No.
Have you identified any specific risks of fraud within your entity?
No.
Has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for members and employees to follow?
Yes.
So then we do have a copy and that is, um, included on board docs, um, for anyone to review it if they please. If yes, does this document prohibit elected officials and employees from doing business with the entity? And they are not prohibited for that policy. Have you or any related party of yours had any interest, direct or indirect, in any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July first, twenty twenty, to which the SAU district, SAU, or any retirement, savings, pension, or other similar plan was or is to be a party? The first item is sale, purchase, exchange, or leasing of property? Receiving or furnishing goods, services, or facilities? Transfer or receipt of income or assets? Maintenance of bank balances, that's compensating balances for the benefit of another? Any other transactions? Does the board formally authorize all disbursements, both vendor and payroll, prior to the release of funds? So you do?
Yes.
That's part of that approval process, um, that you, you do via, either docu-sign or, or at the board meeting when you vote. Describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes, um, in the laws and regulations pertaining to the entity. So typically, we will update you, um, either through the superintendent directly or from the SAU office, is that, is that appropriate? Does the board review comparative reports of estimated and actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures? So, so that's, um, those are those reports that I provide on a monthly basis. This month is actually the one month we don't, because we're a month into the fiscal year. And there really has not been any expenditures or revenue at this point. But next month, you get to look forward to another financial report, so I know you, I'm, I'm sure the crowd is disappointed. What procedures does the board follow in reviewing or using these reports? For example, does the board normally meet with the department heads as part of the process? Also, does the board review both the revenue and expenditure reports? So both of those reports are reviewed, offplayed with myself. Has the board approved a disaster recovery plan in the event of loss or interruption of the IT function? And you have, um, a back copy is provided on board docs. Is there a written investment policy adopted? Yes, there is, and the last date that it was reviewed was on October twenty second of twenty nineteen. Have you adopted the use of either debit or credit cards by employees? And you, you have. Does the board have knowledge of any funds or bank accounts that are not in the custody of the treasurer? So there are two, um, there's one is the student activities fund, um, and that is held by, um, both the principals, Aaron Milbury and Stephanie LeFrenier. And, um, the expendable trust funds, so that's the building man's expendable trust, the special education expendable trust. Those are the ones two, um, and that's managed by the Seabrook trustees of the trust funds. Has the board approved a fund balance policy in compliance with GASB fifty four? And you ha- you have, and that is also included on board docs. Does the school district, SAU, have knowledge of any crowdfunding activities? If so, please indicate what they are, on what website they are maintained, or who is responsible for them. So there's not, I'm aware of, so last year, last fiscal year, that answer was yes, because we did the GoFundMe campaign for the food service. So that, that's considered a crowdfunding activity. So are, if, if you're aware of any that I'm unaware of, then please let me know. Thanks. And the last question is, since the World Health Organization's declaration of the worldwide pandemic due to coronavirus, COVID nineteen, how has the board adapted to the following? The first item is approving vendor and payroll manifest. And what we've done is, um, do electronic signature, via docu-sign. All manifests, um, both payroll and accounts payable are scanned and sent to the school board members. That includes a FACA for your signature, do you have a question?
Yes. I was gonna ask you.
Oh. Reviewing budget versus actual reports, um, and that's done, um, via board docs. And the last item is banking financial decis- decisions, so that's, for example, be approving contracts, leases, accepting anticipated gifts, grants, donations, or year-end conferences. And that's done, that was done, because we're looking back a year, just, so everyone's aware, we're looking at twenty nineteen, twenty, so ending June thirtieth. So that was all done via our school board meetings, via Zoom, um, and then board docs and documents.
Well, we gotta continue to do that, uh, electronic signatures.
Yeah, um, I, I feel like it's, it was on our roadmap anyway, it just, it's accelerated. I feel like it makes it a lot easier for you.
Absolutely.
That's good to hear. So what we will do is, I will, um, send this questionnaire to the board chair, uh, for signature via docu-sign, and then we will submit it to the auditors, um, to be as part, as part of their audit. So I will say, so just so you're all aware, the auditors have been in the office the last two weeks conducting this work. Um, and we will have some preliminary results that I'll report back on, um, likely at the September.
So we have, I think. Um, I think we have, like, if we have any more questions from the public, we can go there now. Anybody?
Have you made any decisions about after school care?
Oh, yeah, that, that was on our agenda as well.
You take that one?
You take that.
Oh, right, I take that, that's awesome, my right. So we do have after school care, um, I can speak for the Seabrook Adventure Zone. We now have a new site for SAS, which will be working with kindergarten through fourth graders. And we are maintaining our original site, which is working with fifth graders to eighth graders. So we have a full after school scale from kindergarten all the way up to the eighth grade. And our first day will be on September thirteenth. So any other new information that should be coming out really soon in terms of registration forms, program flyers, stuff like that? Right now, we're estimating our first day of releasing those to be at the Seabrook Old Home Day. SAS will have a couple of tents set up with the SRD located near us, one of our biggest partners. And we will have those forms ready for you guys that day, starting that morning, they will also be accessible on our website, which is seabrookadventurzone.com.
Is that in-house or is that?
That is in-house, our elementary program will be in the elementary school, and our middle school program will be in the middle school. And I can believe that that's part of it all, which is that it's free, it's an absolutely free program, that is the most important part of it. Do you have any, any questions on SAS?
Can I add on first?
Yeah.
We've had the C-First program, some of you have participated in after school previously, so first I wanna thank Aaron Miller, who kind of organized that for us, and, and a lot of staff who had worked on that for years and years and years, and we feel like we're kind of bringing it now to full scale. So it will be, um, the SAS program will be collaborating with them and trying to connect between the, you know, during school and after school staff. It will be five days a week until six o'clock. I know that was kind of, um, tough in the CCR schedule, so it's another option for families.
Good information to include, so, yeah, I'm just like, I start going on a tangent.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Do they have a, do you guys have a limit of how many kids you can take?
It's a really great question, alright, so, um, to give you guys the limits that we wrote into the grant, just to give you a little funding background, we are based on grant funding, um, it's a grant called the Twenty First Century Community Learn Centers Grant, it's through the Department of Education, and it's a national grant. So every state has a certain amount of funding that they can apply for, um, on a rolling basis, depending on funds that are available. Our numbers that we wrote into the grant are fifty students per day, we can accommodate up to sixty five and seventy right now. If we, and this will definitely happen with the elementary, and we'd have to be idiots not to see it coming at us. If or when we do get a waiting list, we will work on getting more staff in there, we'll work on, um, being really creative with our spaces. I can tell you that SAS in the middle school and, um, biggest amount that we've had per day has been about eighty five kids, and we've never had to use a waiting list. So we're very creative, we do our best to get every kid into this after school program. And of course, the relationship and, and working with the school, that, those are the conversations that we're all ready to have.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do we have anything else on ASR funding?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jessica Parsons, and I'm the Director of Special Services. For those of you who don't know me, and my role really is to just make sure all kids get what they need. I presented earlier, um, June, I think, um, the ASR two funds. And, um, for those of you who weren't there for the presentation, really, the CARES money is really to help, um, from the impact of COVID, to, to mitigate any gaps that may have occurred, um, any challenges that have occurred in, um, learning, whether that's socially, emotionally, or academically, and really to support, um, any gaps in learning for, for students. So with that, um, our first thing, um, that we came out, or we rolled out with in June was really to, um, to, uh, create a robust, um, multiple tiered systems of support. And really what that means is giving direct services back to students and to teachers. And so the board, at, um, at the last meeting, so I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go in order, I'm gonna scroll to staffing, approved us using the CARES two funds to create, um, these positions, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight positions that you can see that directly impact, um, our work with students. And so those positions, uh, were in the, the first or the second round of CARES funding. This third allocation has come in, and with that third allocation, we have, um, you can see a little over, uh, two million dollars. And so in utilizing those funds, we'd like to, to continue that staffing, um, for the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year into the twenty three, twenty four school year. So those positions that you approved for the, um, CARES two fund, we're asking to, um, utilize the funding for CARES three for, um, two more fiscal years. In addition to that, we are, um, looking to add in some additional professional development in the area of literacy and reading for students. Eureka is the math program in which we use, um, both at the middle school and the elementary school, so additional professional development for staff there. And then, um, additional training for MTSs, which is multiple tiered systems of support. At our last board meeting, um, we talked about, um, how we're implementing that across both schools. And then, and additionally, we'll need continued professional development for our staff in order to continue to implement, um, being able to support students at whatever level they're in, whether that's in the classroom, whether that's additional, um, supports outside of the classroom in a small group setting, or whether that's, um, tier three in the special education setting. In addition to that, we, we wanted to, um, utilize, uh, monies, um, through facilities, so we met with Peter, and we talked about what we could do in those areas. So looking at, um, for those of you who aren't familiar, on the elementary side, there is an upstairs addition that was added on. And so looking at that, bringing in an architect to see how we can potentially redesign that space to be more, to utilize more for, um, to support students and services. Looking at adding two outdoor classroom structures, so that we can continue with outdoor education for our students. Upgrading, um, the, the middle school windows, um, in an area of the building where, um, the light, um, it was, there were more like basement windows and wanting to open those up to create more space as well as more airflow. And then just looking at, um, our HVAC replacement upgrades and repairs. And so, um, you're looking at about a hundred and sixty three thousand, or a little over a hundred and sixty three thousand on the facility side. And then next, we look at technology, we met with, um, Dan Oy, who, um, got bids and quotes for the following, um, I don't know, you can read the list, but it goes, um, from, um, providing, um, all SES, um, teachers, Surface Pros. The elementary, uh, the middle school side already has those. And that just allows better accessibility in terms of utilizing smart boards, um, the, the, there's just more capabilities in the Surface Pros versus the, um, the Chromebooks, which most staff have right now, or the desktops, which are becoming sort of obsolete, which, um, superintendent spoke about, um, at our last meeting. Looking at updating our interactive displays, as well as just sort of updating, um, our science lab, uh, robotics, all things that you can see are direct, that will have a direct impact on our work with students. Can I run you one over the staffing piece? As you can see here for us, we added the community engagement piece, um, for SAS, so that we can add the SES component, um, for SAS. And then lastly, just additional supplies and materials that we need, um, when we did have to go remote, we did have to provide a lot of materials out to students, um, in their homes. And, um, we just wanna make sure that we're able to, um, continue to have the resources needed in the classrooms. And so just making sure that we have literacy kits, math kits, um, as well as, um, our ability to, uh, provide intervention for students as well. So I wanted to see if the board had any questions about our proposal for utilizing the funds. You can also see at the top, we did not expend all of the funds, so this was the grant total. Here's what we're proposing to spend, and we have, um, a little less than three hundred and fifty thousand remaining.
I have a question, what kind of outdoor spaces are you looking to create? Do you?
Um, is it okay if I hand it off to Peter? He's got the more technical language than I do.
So the outdoor spaces are basically the twenty by twenty, uh, timber structures, they have the hot metal roofs, they also have monolithic slabs. There should be one for the middle school, one for the elementary. So they're kind of geared more so that the kids can get outside, have some shade, um, you know, do whatever they need to do in there as well. So if they're running like a science project or something like that, they would have more stable ground to do stuff on.
Where would you guys be placing those?
Um, that's still in the process of trying to figure out where those would go. But as soon as we know, we'll, uh, show it to you guys.
Before you go then?
Thanks.
Yeah, don't wanna be moving hot green twice.
Go ahead, Kelly.
So it says, central air replacement upgrades and repairs. Where do we have central air?
The HVAC systems?
Yeah.
Throughout the building?
How about in the elementary school, is there AC there, central air?
So. The HVAC, so Peter could probably, yeah, I'm not even gonna try to.
Have that, it's like, B four.
Oh, okay, so can we recommend those farms central air?
Yeah, so right now, um, the upstairs to the elementary has a seat in it. And obviously the library and a key, a couple of the places, the other elementary library has a seat in it. The only unit that actually supplies both heat and AC is this library. The rest of them are all outside sources where it's either a split unit or, you know, there's, um, there's air ducts just dedicated to AC. So yeah, that's, basically what we're proposing is add more HVAC systems. There's some key spots in this building that, you know, could use it. With HVAC, with the HVAC having AC in it, it kind of helps out with the very hot days that, you know, that happen, like, right?
So I don't know anything about central air, but is the duct work and everything all set, that if we wanted to get central air, that it's all good to go?
Yeah, so right now, we have duct work, we have the, um, the air handlers that are in place, we can add those in, but it is not cheap. For one unit, I know that this, this library, we have, the HVAC is included with AC, so that this way, you know, I can either shut the AC off, or I can turn it on, uh, based on temperature. So that would be controlled by a heating and cooling program as well. It's possible to add AC to all of the HVACs, but we do have a lot, so keep that in mind. I think we have roughly around thirty or forty units in this building.
So Peter, just to add in, I think some of the.
So Peter just added, I think some of the work we're looking to do is to centralize things and connect it, so that we can control it better, and it's not all the separate units that Peter had to maintain, but it's, you know, all hooked in the system.
We did just actually have the HVAC system upgraded. We used to have a Honeywell program that's kind of obsolete, they stopped the parts for it. As you guys know, we had failure for one part of the season here. That was upgraded, and the new upgrade should be installed by the end of next week.
Any other questions?
I do, actually, so I don't really have a problem with any of the stuff that's on here, except when I compare that we are putting over a million dollars into staffing, which is smart for the longitudinal part of it, to cover that, like, I'm assuming it's gonna be a three-year contract, is what we're looking at with those positions, which I think is fantastic. But when I compare it to our outdoor classroom structure amount, we're looking at, and both, both ideas are to get support services for students, but in terms of sustainability and over the years, outdoor classroom structure seems to be where we should be putting more than just eighty thousand dollars into outdoor spaces for our kids to be able to have outdoor classroom space. If under that eighty thousand dollars, that's really only covering the two twenty-by-twenty, that's two classrooms per period that would be able to use that. So there's definitely, I think, still a stronger need for additional outdoor classroom spaces and materials. So that's really the only target area that I'm looking at on here, that I'm really concerned with, is that I really, I don't feel like we're putting enough of our resources into building these outdoor structures, or even just spaces that we talked about throughout COVID. You know, we talked about getting kids outside, we talked about the only way you can take your mascots if you're outdoors. Well, we can't even do that if we don't have the spaces set up for our teachers. So I guess my push on here is everything else looks fantastic. My big thing is that I think we really need to put more money of this S R, this S R allotment into outdoor classroom structures. I guess it's my big push right there.
So we do have some remaining funds, as you can see. So why don't I do this, I can bring it back to the admin team? And I think, one, just sort of looking for your approval around the outdoor structures, it sounds like you're in full support of the outdoor structures. And then thinking about placement of where those would be, and then are we able to add in more outdoors? And if that's sort of the case, that we can kind of bring that back to you and kind of give you a plan, how does that sound?
I think that sounds great.
So I'll stay tuned, and I can present it to F and S. If this looks good, obviously, there's some additional fundings that we could potentially put into some additional outdoor classrooms, so I can present to you at the next board meeting.
Sure.
Thank you. Awesome, you're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
We have twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two student and parent guardian handbook.
I was interrupting you, I wanted to wait until it was completed with the full package. So we're not, you're not gonna do anything on that, are we?
I think we will.
Because Jessica was to bring it back. It had a plan, she had suggested, yeah. Jess, did you mean for the additional funds?
Yeah.
We're asking for you to approve what we have proposed so far, but we'll be presenting more with the additional funds.
Sure.
There's nothing else on there.
So I'll make a motion to accept the proposed S R funds, I guess with the exception of looking into, like, more outdoor spaces.
So. Motion to approve the current proposal with the addition of. Motion to approve the current proposal for use of S R three funds in addition to outdoor spaces being brought back with additional funding, is that our?
A second. All those in favor? We have SES twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two student and parent guardian handbook.
There's not a lot of changes from the past, we have some clarifications, some policy reference updates. It's still in draft because we'll be finalized. Ours handbook always has the staff, so parents can easily navigate that. So just a couple things now, confirmal on that today. I think if we can, just, the only thing that we'd be updating is just the finalization of the staff.
Has there been any changes?
There has. You said there have been some changes, like you have. Yeah, I mean, you've had it for ages, no changes since the beginning.
So I'm just at a draft under the proposed motion, motion to approve the draft.
Student parent handbook, make a motion to approve the SES twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two student parent handbook draft.
All those in favor?
We used to do it hardcover, so you'd get your approval and have all the, to be determinative, to be determinative.
Yeah.
It's nice to have it electronic and have it up to date.
All right, so next, S M S student handbook twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Looking for a motion on that.
Ours is the same, it really weren't, the only real updates were the grading, which Dave just presented on, so that's kind of the only section that saw a lot of changes, other than general updates.
Excellent, thank you. I'll make the motion to approve the S M S student handbook twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two draft. All those in favor? I'm writing down through the after-school, which I'm sure we'll have a comment when we visit that. So I think, recommendation of knowledge, sure, I'm gonna do that up. But let's, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to, I'm going to non-public under our say ninety-one dash eight, colon, three, two, eight, through seven. All those in favor?